Okay. Good evening, good morning, people. This is a scheduled, regular scheduled meeting of Griggs County Commission, October twenty first, twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Uh, call it to order. Will everybody stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You missed spoken at the twenty first, not the twenty second.
Okay, sorry.
You're, you're good.
On that one. Okay, roll call. Avriel, you're... Eli.
Here.
Zorn.
Here.
Edlin.
Here.
And Trambi's here. So, anyway, so I have a, do a motion that, everybody look at the agenda, we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Um, at the last meeting, you guys wanted Linda on the agenda. Um, she doesn't have enough information yet, so she wants you to push it back off until, um, she can get a little bit more information for you.
Sounds good.
And there was something else I was gonna put on, but I can't remember off the top of my head here. Um... If I, go ahead, Steph.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Steph makes a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Avriel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Okay. Uh, we have a, we have a applicant for the District One appointment for a commission on that one. We'll look at that real quick. Um, it's Lauren Ellison up, up, up in Binford. It's in your second page there, in the back page of his, of his, um, resume, I call it, on that. Um, my opinion right now is that I got somebody else who's, might be interested too.
Yeah.
So... I'm thinking maybe just to table it for right now and then see who else comes forward on that one. What are you guys' thoughts on that?
Do we need to make a motion to table something?
Uh...
I suppose we do, yes.
We do, yeah. What are you, what are you guys thinking on this one? I just, that's my, that's my thoughts.
I'll make a motion to table the...
What, what do you think your other personnel be?
I don't know. I'll talk to him next, probably next couple of weeks, the way it looks, you know? We can do, I talked to Jamie last night and the commission has the power or authority to basically, you can look at a, eh, eh, look at like a sample at this applicant, either, you know, ha, or reject him or accept him or move on to somebody else, you know? We can pretty much do anything we want on that end of it. We wanna point to the position. There's a lot of power there, so, on that one, so. That's kinda my opinion right now, at least on that one, so.
I'll make a motion to move the commission District One appointment to the next meeting?
Meeting, yes. That would be good, on that one. Okay, do you have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, same, or same sign? Motion carried.
Um, with that, I did have the, um, ad say that they had to be in by on Wednesday and then everything was gonna be appointed today. Would I have to put out a new ad?
You'd probably put a new ad out again. Yeah, put a new ad out there, Sam, but we have a lot of latitude on this one, so. Okay, so approval of October seventh meeting minutes? Can we take a peek at that, Bernie, please?
There's three of them.
There's three of them. October seventh, uh, oh, it's also the special meeting at six o'clock on the seventh, too. The reg, regular meeting was like October seventh, that was the recommissioned meeting for the budget or the beginning of it, and then the six o'clock meeting was the actual budget. And then seventeenth was the burning ban one minute, eight minutes. Can we do it all at one time or can we?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Let me take a peek at that, see what you guys think.
Would you like the minutes, each individual minutes, or you want me to do all of them?
You can do all of them.
All at one time.
Doesn't have to be.
That's what you prefer? I'll make a motion to accept the October seventh regular meeting, special meeting, and October
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, special meeting, and dispense with the reading.
Okay, a motion from Edlin to approve the minutes, um, disperse the reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Zorn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next item. Oh, the bills, our favorite spot to look at. Everybody take a peek at them, please, and see what you guys think. Any surprises in them you should know about, Sam?
No.
Okay. Take a few minutes, look at these quick. How are we coming on that? I see you got election systems and software there, Sam. We're okay in the money and that for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So...
Yep, um, so, yeah, so I've explained that in the past too, but, uh, um, it looks like there's a negative in there, but that's because you guys, um, gave me a huge chunk of money for election and then I split it out myself, so it's, we do have money in there, it's just not in that line item.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, no problem.
I'll make a motion to accept the invoices.
A motion from Edlin to, to accept the invoices for the county. Do I have a second for that? Okay, second by Avriel. Any discussion? We'll, we'll do a voice vote in this, of course. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a voice vote. Uh, Avriel.
Aye.
Eli.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlin.
Aye.
And Trambi, it's aye. Okay, motion carried. So, next on the list is, oh, we have...
I'm Alicia.
You're Alicia?
Yep.
Yeah, you're from the NDSU Extension Agency from out of Fargo, correct?
Uh, I'm actually Valley City.
Valley City.
Are you ready for me or?
Yeah, go, yeah, go ahead then. Yeah, go ahead. Want to explain what we wanna do here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and, um, I'm Alicia Hurst, so I am the interim, um, East District Director while Leslie is on leave. Um, and I'm also the Barnes County Agent Natural Resources Extension Agent. So I'm actually out of Valley City, so I'm not out of Fargo. Um, and I'm guessing you guys got
Yeah, we got that.
Handouts and...
We got, I think it's in our packet, isn't it, Sam?
Well, all the handouts that were in, um, attached to the email.
Think the same thing there, yeah.
Okay, so, all right.
Mine is, mine is in color.
So is mine.
Well, if you want a color version, not that it's, it's the same thing. Um, all right. So if you got the copy of that, but basically what I'm here today, um, thank you very much for having me on the agenda, uh, is just to ask to refill the Agent Natural Resources Extension Position here in Griggs County, uh, following the base policy that we have with NDSU. Uh, so in the packet, we have some information here, uh, just shows, um, the impacts. This is, uh, actually Jeff Stackler's, um, numbers from last year, uh, that's his specific reporting. They have the who are we, what do we do, NDSU extension, as well as some handouts, specific to the 4H and A Natural Resources Program. Um, but kind of a, the big one that we wanna probably discuss today is the base policy, just kinda going over a view so you know what you're agreeing to. Um, the salary for an extension agent is fifty fifty, so the county pays fifty percent, the state pays fifty percent. Um, the other part, uh, the, the state also pays a hundred percent of the benefits of the agent and then the county pays a hundred percent of the operating. So the operating includes office space, paper, and also a hundred percent of the administrative assistant. So that's why the administrative assistant's a county employee. Um, the NDSU is the employer of record for the agent, um, so with that, salary and performance reviews are done in consultant with, um, commission. Um, so usually we have a commissioner at performance reviews and some of those things. Um, and then the salary, the final salary is determined, um, by the district directors. Cause we get directive from the legislative session, what we can do, um, and then with feedback of everybody, that's where the final determination comes with salaries. Um, so I guess with that, I'll open it up. Do you guys have questions, comments?
Do you have, um, any, any applicants at all in the system, in your system at all?
Uh...
I don't, I don't need names, I'm just curious if you have anybody who's, who's interested?
Well, I've talked to people that are interested, but it's not open yet, so until we get approval here, um, they don't take probably another two weeks to get through the NDSU system to be officially open.
Okay.
And then we can take applicants, um, and it's usually open for about thirty days.
Okay.
And then we'll start interviewing. So say it gets approved today, it'll probably be, you know, six weeks before we start interviewing.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like to have that position. I feel, I'd like to have that position filled again and have it redone. Open. So do we need a motion to?
Well, yeah, that's...
To open the position? Is that what it's?
Yep, so we need, um, a, a motion to approve to open it following the NDSU base policy.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion from Edlin.
One of the questions I have, and it was something that came up in, um, when Jeff was still here on the page, and was that you guys had determined that he was gonna get a ten percent raise and then, but we had decided that we were given, what was it, three point two or two point three?
Three point two, yeah.
And then he came in and argued the point, and then we had to, to give him five percent. Um, I guess, I was kinda, I was taken back by that because, um, I guess we were told that if you guys determine a raise, so then that we have to follow suit of what you guys determine, so that our, when we give to the rest of the county... See, I, I didn't, personally didn't think it was fair to the rest of the employees when he got more raise than the rest of us.
Mm-hmm.
But I was told that he was an employee of
Yep, and that's...
NDSU, not us, that we controlled his help, the raise of his help.
Yep.
Not him. So I just wanted to clarify that that was how that works, so.
Yep, and that is how that works, um, cause unfortunately when you're dealing with state and county employees, they're,
Yeah.
There's some years they might be the same.
And, and I was taking...
But there's a lot of years.
And that's where I was, that's where I was not realizing that he was true, actually an employee of the state, not the county.
Yep.
So, okay, I just wanted to verify that.
And then you guys, on his raise from the state, you guys do a performance review.
Yep.
And based on what his performance is, what he gets, correct?
Yep, so I'll give you, like, this last year, we actually did get the legislative, um, legislature said you have, um, X percent for a pool. So with the pool, you actually get to take in merit as well as, um, uh, market value, trying to determine that raise and where a person is at. Some years, we don't get that. Some years, it's no raise. Some years, it's you get X dollars if you're under a certain salary point. So, but yes, if we're in a point where we, we, the legislature gives us that latitude to actually give merit or market-based raises, that's when we can do that. And it's in consultation with commission. Um, you know, Commissioner Edlin, you're even part of the performance reviews there.
Yep.
Um, we usually always have a commissioner with the hiring process, um, on the interview committee, as well as the performance reviews.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, she visits with me prior to doing the
Okay.
their, the interview and doing his evaluation and, um, if you guys, I have very, I have my input to be able to share with her on that and... And so we do have say on that part, I mean, to, to help determine it.
Yep.
You know, so...
And I also noticed, there was an argument here when he first hired Jeff, cause he had a PhD. And of course, he was, he, he commands a higher salary, cause he has a doctor's degree. And that was a point of contention with the commission too, originally, back a few years ago.
Well, the one thing with Jeff though, too, is he also came in with years of experience too.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just making a point.
Yeah, and I think that's probably where, yes, the PhD, but with this position, it's a bachelor's degree required, master's preferred, so he was getting compensated for having, you know, master's plus, plus years of experience was where that was. So honestly, actually, I mean, a PhD is, we like that, but you're probably
Overqualified?
Well, you're not always, no, you're just not always gonna get an additional above a master's necessarily for that, because it's not part of the preferred qualifications.
Yeah.
Are we looking at a helper right away too, then, if we find somebody?
Well, they actually have somebody hired right now.
Sue Brooks right now.
Sue Brooks is, is, is working for us right now.
Okay.
She took the position of, what's she called, um, who headed before Stockland?
Ashley Stockland.
Ashley, and then Sue applied for the position, we had it in the paper for quite a while.
Yeah.
And she took it.
Okay.
So...
She hasn't been there very, mm, a month.
Month, I think about a month, I think that's about right. Sue Brooks took it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And it's, Cam, how many, how many hours is that, Sam?
Twenty.
Twenty? Twenty, okay.
And we'll just continue like we did with Jeff? Cause this is all in our funding and everything, right?
Yeah, and, and Sue is a county employee, so you have complete say over
Yep.
that piece. Um, and so, yeah.
So she got a little bit of training from Jeff before she, before he left.
Okay.
And we're all here in the extension system to help her too, so.
Okay.
She's, she's not by herself.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's really the strength of our system is that, you know, you have the one person here, but you really get the whole extension system to help.
Yeah, I, you know, the, well, I saw this last year with Jeff, you know, he, he was very good at, at his, uh, he was, of course, a weed and crop research guy.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's what he was, that's what he did before, you know? But he did a very good job on the 4H, too.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's, that's a, that's a huge part of this
Yes.
as this equation, as you know.
Cause you have a very big 4H program.
Really, I think there's
Very, you guys are proud of it.
How many kid, how many kids are in it, seventy seven?
Um, in the panel, I think there was
Seventy five?
Ninety-four enrolled.
Oh, wow.
This last, yeah, which it's a, it's a, one of the bigger
Bigger 4H.
Especially if you go per capita, the percent of kids, that's really, well, really, really good.
And I always, I always look at the 4H end of it, you know? We have the school up here, of course, and sports and stuff, but, you know, some kids are sports guys, some kids are the FL level guys, some guys are this, or kids, you know? And this is another avenue for them to excel in, you know, in the 4H. And that's the kinda way I look at it as.
Yep.
We're pretty blessed, we have a pretty good system with the kids. Basically, on my, what I'm thinking is, in my mind, is that a kid there, a kid nowadays has a chance to do, excel in something he likes. He's got a lot of opportunities here. And that's what I look at it as, so.
Hundred percent agree.
Once we, uh, give you the approval, how long you think, is it a good time of year for people to be looking, or is it a
Yeah, it's not, I mean, cause December graduation's coming up, um, you know, but honestly, I'm sure it's just like, anything else, let's, let's get it open and see what's out there. I, I do think there's a couple of people that are interested. Um, and I'll have to inquire with them a little bit more seriously, um, but...
Yeah, it's been, um, we, our funding was up to, up to four mils, right, Sam?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
And you're crazy. The, the funding is it four, is it four mils for extension agents, is that right?
Um, well, it, up to four.
Up to four mils, correct.
Up to four, yep.
Yeah, correct, so, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
You wanna know what it is now?
No, not really, but that's, I'm just, I'm just making a point to that, so. Anyway. So what, what's rest of you guys? Rod? I mean, not Rod, Josh, sorry.
I mean, yeah, if there's a motion, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Especially if it's all in our funding, we're okay.
Yeah.
So...
So, second, second, uh, motion. Edlin made initial motion, Avriel did the second motion. So, do we, we just, do you need a voice vote in this or not, Sam?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I'll do a voice vote in this one. So, all in favor of renewing the contract with the extension service, or how do you wanna do that?
Um, it would be to open up the position.
Open up the position.
Following the base, NDSU's base policy.
Okay, well, just what she just said.
Yeah, cause it's not really a contract.
Okay, I'll do that. So, we're on the room. Avriel?
Say it one more time.
Say it one more time, say it one more time.
Um, so approval to op, uh, open up the Griggs County Agent Position, following the NDSU base policy.
Okay. Avriel?
Aye.
Eli?
Aye.
Zorn? Edlin?
Aye.
And Trambi votes aye. Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much for coming.
I'll be in touch with you with the interview committee and all that, everything. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, no problem.
And as always, if you guys have anything with the extension office, you can either talk directly or you can talk to me to talk to them.
Yep.
I'll happily.
We love to answer questions, that's what we do.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. So, next is, anybody from the Sheriff's Department here yet?
I'm wondering if she's out.
She's out.
Bismarck, I don't know.
I think she was gonna go out. So nobody's
So table that.
Table that, I guess, nobody's there, so. Um, okay, information for the time of, for allowed here, uh, the fraud issue, we had some issues here, we're gonna kinda
It's under investigation, but I just wanted you guys to know that, um, we were a victim of, of a fraud incident, but, uh, um, it's under investigation, so we'll just let you know when we have more information.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, old courthouse, new courthouse? Same old thing? I see everybody's just thrilled about that one.
I don't know if anybody wants to move further to update the historical, the, update our
Whoa.
Um... Update with the Historical Society, cause right now, the last time it's been updated is nineteen seventy-three when they initially did it. I think it was seventy-three when they initially did it. And in order to do anything moving forward, you have to update it again. Whether you want to future, take it down, and I believe anything in future, if you wanna take out grants or anything against it, I think you have to update the listing in the Historical Society, but...
And that's, what they say, that's a twelve thousand or something like that?
You know, you have to go through, you, to do the update, the paperwork, you have to go through a historical architect and that, I haven't gone out and got quotes last, I did a year ago or two years ago, I did that.
There's two, I think.
And it was the, anywhere between, um, four to twelve thousand dollars.
That's about right, yeah.
And I could reach out again, but I don't wanna do it if there isn't true interest in, in moving forward. We did, there's four part, or five parts we need to do, um, and if we wanted to, let's say, take it down in the future, whatever, we've done one. We've done one of the steps of the five. And then, but you have to update the registry, so it's one, and there's another step to update the registry. I'd have to look again, but...
It's all depending on how this whole audit thing we gotta do. Maybe if we got some leftover like grant money, we could apply it to that. So worst case scenario, can we at least get a quote on that?
Sure.
And I mean, I'm not saying that we are, I'm just saying that if we got some of this, we could apply it to that.
Okay.
We had a, what, wasn't there a census done of the public at one time, not too long ago? Of, you know, if they wanted it down or not?
There was a vote that went through, um, a non-binding vote.
Yep.
And it was more than fifty percent wanted the courthouse raised, so...
Raised, what did you raise?
That's the terminology that it was, so it was tore down.
Oh, okay.
The pro, the problem with the courthouse, of course, it's gonna be, this raise is gonna be quite expensive.
Oh.
Big time.
White.
Yeah, big time. I know Dale Peterson made a comment last time, he said, out in Mercer County, they, they had to razz their courthouse, Mercer County, and that's, of course, where the Falk Court mines are at, and they just gave them a Falk Court donated a hole to bury it in, you know, for them, you know, free of charge, you know, but, yeah.
Well, worst case scenario, we can move to the next step, and like you said, if it helps us get grants or something like that for future stuff. I mean, I'm not saying it, it's going to, but we can at least move forward on something like that.
Even if you update the listing in Historical Society, doesn't mean we're gonna take it down or not.
No.
It's just one of the steps that to move forward to do so.
I think I agree with Josh, though, we better see where we come up
Yeah.
with this, before we spend any more money right now.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. Okay, I'll, I will email for quotes to bring to the next meeting, just, or I can get the quotes and then we'll start discussing.
Yes, just get the quotes and then, cause the next meeting, if that lady shows up and we, we discuss what's going on and what it's gonna cost us and everything else, we can go from there.
Right.
At least, you know, we have an, something else, uh, we can factor in if we're not gonna be in a bind.
Correct. Okay, sounds good. Or even if you need to put future funds away for things, you know?
It's something we maybe have to budget for, you know, eventually to, a, a line item or something for just demolition of the courthouse, you know, eventually, I'm afraid, you know? So, yeah, bummer.
Yeah, I'll tear it down, but at the same time, it's, it's falling apart.
It's falling, yeah.
It's vulnerable, it's unsafe, I don't want it. So, I'm worried about, what I'm worried about is somebody getting in there and getting hurt.
It's a great liability.
And then the county's gonna get sued over it.
Yeah, right now we got a fencer on it, of course, but that doesn't mean much sometimes, so.
That's, yeah, that's, and I don't wanna see it go down, cause it's a neat old building.
Mm-hmm. Very unique, just, I think it's, is it the second oldest courthouse in the state, I think? I think Jamestown is the oldest.
We were first or second.
Yeah, we're right, one or two, correct, yeah.
I think Steel County's right, right behind us, cause their courthouse is old, and I've worked on that one, and that one's, that one seems like it's just, just about just as old as ours.
And then Jamestown, I think, is, or Stetson County, I think that one is, I, it's, it's still, it's not, I don't think it uses it, right? It's just active, or I mean, it's, it's, it's open to the public, right? But, yeah, on that one, but anyway. Okay, let's move forward on that one then, so. Um, okay, future business. Uh, put County Road Eight back on there, dear, please.
Okay.
Wayne will be here next time, hopefully, so. Oh, and then the, then the burning ban, too. Well, right, this burning ban expires, we had a seven day thing on it, you know?
Yeah.
Of course, we got half inch rain, so it's like, yeah, but what do you do?
Right.
You know, it was, at that, that day, actually
Before all dry it was, that half inch rain isn't much.
No.
That's, that's a thing, it's like, I was, the day before, I was digging, and that ground is dry and it is hard.
It's like a rock.
And when it's bad dry and that hard, half inch rain, within a couple of days, it's dry again. So...
So your next meeting, I have the tax director, I have the sheriff's office, commissioner District One appointment, County Road Eight, and burn ban.
Yep. Anything else, guys, you can take up?
You said that, that, uh,
Yeah, that was burning the courthouse.
She's shooting me on there, that we're trying to figure out for this audit deal.
Reassessment?
Yeah.
Yeah, tax director.
Yeah.
Yeah, Linda will be here.
So I just wanna know if we're, like I said, if it's, you know, like you said, I think what Nelson's, Tony got hit with a bunch of money that they have to figure out costs, so I wanna make sure we don't get hit, or if we do, we're somewhat trying to figure out how to pay for it and make it so we're okay.
It'd be interesting when Linda shows up, what she has to say, correct?
Yeah, Linda will have a better idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, she wanted to get going on the sales ratio study first, before she can know
Yeah.
more about the reassessment order and stuff, so.
Any else, guys, girls?
A few years back, I did talk to Bob Vanguard as far as like the assessments, and there's a couple of different ways to do it. And he said, at that time, and I spoke with him, that they're, they were backed up, I mean, they were scheduled out a few years.
Oh, wow.
So even if we, you know, and the costs, but there was like a different option to do, or even if Linda has ideas, I'm not even sure how it all works personally, just that last time we had Vanguard come in and do the assessment of the county, of the county, so.
Any, anything else, guys? Okay. Not, I, I can't do this. Who can, who, who gets to replace me?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Rod, Rod makes a motion to adjourn, do I have, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And Zorn, or Avriel, second sits. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, motion carried. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next meeting.
Next meeting is at nine, it's at nine thirty on November fourth, in this meeting chambers.